Hey everybody, welcome back. Thank you for joining us. We are in our session three. The topic is hell. So, uh, thank you so much for joining us. If you've missed any of our first two sessions, you can go to our WhitestoneChurchTX.com website. Uh, and you could go to the sermons and, uh, um, and you'll see them on there. You can, uh, more readily go to our YouTube page, WhitestoneChurchTX.com. Uh, we're on Facebook Live right now, so they're also archived there. But if you missed any of our previous sessions, uh, again, go to our WhitestoneChurchTX.com website. Go to the Contact Us, we'll send you the notes. If you're waiting on tonight's notes, I apologize, we had a little delay. They are on their way. Uh, I just literally pressed Send or pushed, uh, pushed Send to my dad and he's gonna send those out to you in just a few minutes. So if you're waiting on tonight, Session Three notes, they do exist. They're really here, they are live. Uh, you should be getting those any minute. For our sessions, uh, I really want you to, to get our notes. We got notes for every, every session, one, two, and three, cuz I'll, I'll skim through them. I talk a lot of, from the notes, but, uh, this way you can go back, study it yourself. Um, we did the same thing with our Revelation Bible study. All of our, all of our videos are on our YouTube channel. Uh, we are asking that you'll go subscribe to our YouTube channel cuz we'd like to be able to go live simultaneously, uh, along with Facebook Live. And so, just so that we could reach a, a audience, uh, a little bit bigger. And sometimes it's easier for people that are more acclimated to one of those two platforms, uh, other than, than the other one. So, again, WhitestoneChurchTX.com, go to the Contact Us. If you've got questions about hell, you've got questions that, that maybe I could answer. Um, I'll do my best to answer them, uh, or direct you into some resources that, that could better assist you. But, uh, if you need, if you've got questions about God, email us. Uh, if you want a Bible, we'd be happy to send you a Bible. If you need, uh, you know, if you just need somebody to reach out, just let us know. So, uh, we love you, let's pray, we'll get started and, uh, and go from there. So your notes should be arriving soon. Uh, so apologize for the lateness in getting those out. So, Father God, we love you, God, we bless you, God, we declare that you are holy, you are righteous, and God, that you reign supreme in heaven, God. That you are the King of all kings. You're the Lord of all lords, you are the great I am, the Alpha, the Omega, the beginning, the end, the first, the last, the Author, the Finisher. God, you are our Redeemer, you are the Lamb, you are the lion of the tribe of Judah. You are our Redeemer, you're our peace, you're our morning star, God. You are our blessing, you are our Sabbath, you're our rest, God. You are our life, our bread, our water, God, you are sustenance. And so, Father, we ask for your wisdom, your discernment. Holy Spirit invade the airwaves, Holy Spirit invade, um, each person watching or listening. Uh, God, just speak to us in a mighty way. And I just wanna give, uh, a shout out and praise to God and just say, Jesus, thank you for blessing us. And everybody said, amen. So, hey, listen, grab your Bible, grab something to write with, grab your notes, grab some paper. Take notes, get ready, here we go, we're gonna talk about hell again. I won't recap too much cuz if you missed Session One and Two, there's some good basis for things that you'll have a body in heaven or hell. You'll have an eternal body. Hell is without peace, hell is without love, hell is absent of sanity. Uh, there's no party in hell, there's no mercy in hell, there's no water in hell, there's no food in hell, there's no sex, drugs, and rock and roll in hell, there's no life. Hell is the second death. In hell, there's different levels of suffering. Jesus spoke to that on his own. I wanna talk tonight, I wanna kick off tonight that hell is a real place in earth. Yes? You can't Google it? Uh, I don't know of a tour guide or, or anybody giving tours of hell, but hell exists in reality. It's not metaphorical, it's not just a word picture. Hell is a real place. Hell does not have joy. Hell is the second death. Hell is absent of revenge. You ever heard somebody say, you know, "I'm gonna go to hell and I'm gonna, I'm gonna pay back all those who hurt me"? There's no revenge in hell. There's no kindness, there's no calm, there's no order in hell. There's, there's no escape, there's no laughter, there's nothing cool or calming. Um, there's no friendship in hell. Absolutely no friendship, no communication with other people. There's no joy. Hell is a bad place. But here's what most of us don't believe. Here's what most of us believe, don't believe, and surprisingly, most people in the church, professing Christians, don't believe that hell is real and literally located in earth. Now, there's some root causes to this problem. One, a lot of people believe in heaven worldwide. They may not believe in the biblical form of heaven, but they believe in a, a form of afterlife that is good. They call it nirvana, utopia, eternal bliss, uh, a, um, uh, non-existence, uh, this mental state of being. There's a lot of different forms of belief. Most people believe in a place called heaven, or the good afterlife. But a smaller percentage believe in the reality of hell. I wanna pull out some verses from your Bible that would help you understand that when Jesus and Scripture talks about hell, it's not just using, "Oh, let me talk to these dumb people here", and just kinda tell them, "Hell's down, heaven's up", okay? You know, it's, it's real, it's not just this idea, it's not just metaphor. A lot of the reason why we believe that Scripture is metaphorical and not literal is really rooted in evolution. It's, uh, it's rooted in Darwinism, it's rooted in this idea that we evolved as a human species, that the world evolved. Now, you may be going past, "Or how in the world are you putting that and that together"? It's this simple, and we could talk about it more when we studied Genesis one day. But, the devil has convinced, through false theology, through thought, through false doctrine, that we have evolved, that we started dumb and we are now superior. We are now smarter, we have evolved from caveman, ooh, ooh, dragon, his club and his girl, ooh, ooh, you know, not being able to communicate, fire, fire, you know, discovering this thing. And now, we've evolved to planes, trains, automobiles, I know that was a movie, planes, trains, Apple iPhones, you know, technology. So, we've evolved, obviously, we evolved. I don't wanna go down this road too far, but I just, I do wanna say this. Technology does not equal intelligence. Now, technology has definitely advanced. I would make the argument, and really not me, the Bible makes the argument that the smartest person to ever walk the earth, other than Jesus, we're taking Jesus out of the equation, the smartest human being, the smartest human man and woman were Adam and Eve. They were the most intelligent, superior, supreme forms of human beings. After sin, their bodies and their minds started to deteriorate. If Adam and Eve had never sinned, their bodies would still be alive today because they were made forever. We, you and I, listening, were made to live eternally. The problem was, after they ate the fruit, they died. They died spiritually, they died physically. Not instantly, they didn't just keel over cuz it was poison. No, they, they lived for hundreds of more years, according to the Bible. Adam lived to be over nine hundred years old. But they started to break down in their DNA. So, in evolution, evolution would say that our, that we are getting smarter. The Bible would teach that our DNA is breaking down, generation to generation to generation. And so, therefore, we are functioning less supremely as Adam did, if you will. What's all this got to do with hell and the Bible and the belief in hell? The attack of the belief in the reality of Scripture has been one of Satan's strongest, um, victories or wins in Christianity. And it starts with the creation of the world. In the beginning, God said, "Let there be light", and there was light, and light separated darkness from light, and it was the first day, evening and morning. "Arev and bokar", Hebrew words. "Arev and bokar", evening and morning were the first day, and God said, "It is good". And in six days, God created the world, and on the seventh day, he rested. Now, we as believers believe the creation story. But science, and not just science, but scientism. Scientism is a terminology, term that you may not have ever heard before, but scientism is the belief that science is truth. There's science and there's scientism. One is healthy, one is worshiped. Scientism has crept in and said, "Well, there's no way proven on carbon dating that the world could be as old as the Bible says. There's no way that God really spoke these things into existence. There's no way, because we have proof of the Big Bang and we have proof of cosmic soup that created you and, and you went from cosmic soup to the zoo to you", as Frank Treddy would say, "You, you've, you've evolved and, and things just happen naturally and God's sitting back and watch..." Listen, that belief system has crept into Christianity in saying, "If we can't trust what the Word of God says, then it must not be literal, it must just all be a good story for us to build morals and ethics and guidelines around." But God doesn't really mean what he says. See, the question you've gotta answer when you study Revelation, we just finished twenty sessions in Revelation. And, and if you don't believe that what the Bible says, then you won't believe that Jesus could have been and was and is speaking very literally. Now, there's time in Scripture for metaphor, there's time for analogy, there's time for poetic speech. There's time that God uses references like a roaring lion. God's not a lion, he's not the physical creature. He's using those characteristics to describe Jesus like a lamb, the Lamb of God. There's time where, where that is true and that's applicable, but there's other times where it's not and we have assumed it to be that way. So, with that said, you can study that a little bit more on your own. Take this for what it's worth. Hell is located inside this spherical earth, this earth. It's inside the earth, it's underground, according to Scripture. Matthew sixteen, this is a reference very popular in Christian circles. Your pastors preached on it probably numerous times. But I wanna bring it to light in Jesus's day and what he may have and was saying to his disciples. Turn with me to Matthew chapter sixteen in your Bible, and let's start in verse one. This is a famous reference because this is the very first time that a human on earth declared Jesus to be God, the Son of God, who accurately knew who Jesus was. Matthew chapter sixteen, verse one, "When Jesus came", or, I'm sorry, verse thirteen. When, Matthew chapter sixteen, verse thirteen. "When Jesus came into the region", so, so mark that in your Bible, "when he came into the region of Caesarea Philippi", mark that. It's not just there to take up space, it's not just there, "Oh, yeah, Jesus was walking into town", no, Jesus came into the region. So, I just kinda want you to write the words Caesarea Philippi, it's written in your Bible. Write CP, Caesarea Philippi, Caesarea Philippi, and then draw a circle around it, just put region. Region means territory, it means a space, a, 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 a roped-off section. "When Jesus came into the region of Caesarea Philippi, he asked his disciples, 'Hey guys, best friends, gather around, I got a question for you, trivia time!' Hey, uh, who do men say that I am? Who do men say that I, the son of man, am? Who, who do, hey, what's the word on the street, what's the buzz out there? What are people telling, saying about me? Who, who do they say that I am? Do they say that I'm, who, what do they call me out there? Oh, you don't wanna know what they call you, Jesus?" But, so some of the disciples said, "Well, Jesus, some people think you're John the Baptist, some people think you're Elijah, others think you're Jeremiah or one of the prophets." Then Jesus flips it and says, "But who do you say that I am?" Simon Peter answered and says, "You are the Christ, the Son of the living God." Those words, you may have blown through them, but those are huge. He didn't say, "You're Jesus", he says, "You are the Christ." The Christ wasn't, Christ is not Jesus's last name. It's Jesus Christ, Jesus the Christ, the Messiah, it's his title, it's his position, it's his calling. Christ. Satan will come and fill a man and he'll be called the Antichrist. He won't be anti-Jesus. He'll, he'll, "Oh, yeah, I love Jesus like the next guy, here goes Jesus", but I, Antichrist, he won't call himself that either, "But I am the Messiah, I am the way to God, I am the truth, I am the life, I am the Savior of the world." Jesus, when Peter calls him Christ, he goes, "You are the Savior, you're the Messiah, you're the one that dominates all other false gods. You trump all other authority, you are God." He says, "But who do you say I am?", verse sixteen, "You're the Christ, the Son of the living God." Then Jesus answered and said to him, "Blessed are you, Simon Barjona, for flesh and blood has not revealed to, this to you, but my Father, who is in heaven, and I..." See, see, Peter calls Jesus who he is. Peter identified correctly, "You, you're the Christ, you're the Son of the living God." So, Jesus says, "Congratulations, man, only my Father could've downloaded that to you. You know what, Peter, everybody calls you Peter, I'm gonna tell you who you are now." It's so cool, I could preach on that. Revelation chapter two, seventeen, God calls you something that you don't even know. Look it up, ask Jesus who you are. But he says this, "I say, and I also say to you that you are Peter, and on this rock", now, where is Jesus and the boys? They're at the region of Caesarea Philippi. Just to give you some little historical hindsight before I talk more about the rock, they're standing at the foot of a mountain, and that mountain is called Mount Hermon. It's still there today, still a mountain. Caesarea Philippi is still a city, it's still a region, it's still an area. But in this day and age, they are in this region, standing at the base of this mountain. This mountain is called Mount Herman, or Mar, or, or Mount Hermon. This is the mountain that the fallen angels gathered on when they came down to earth. And they established a high place, a region of pagan doctrine, pagan theology. This mountain was known in the occultic pagan worlds that were against Jesus, against Judaism, to build high temples, high, uh, places of worship for sacrifice to demon gods, to fallen angels. This was a territory that was known for its corruption. And at the base of this mountain, Jesus and his twelve little ragtag boys go to this mountain, and Jesus says, "You know what? Hey, by the way, who do people say I am? Let me remind you, boys, I just entered into a demonic region. I just entered into a territory that is possessed by powerful spirits of the underworld. Let me just remind you guys, yeah, we're going to Caesarea Philippi. A Jew never would've gone into Caesarea Philippi. It would be the equivalent of, of people, of Christians saying, "You know what? Man, I'm gonna go to that satanic temple down there and worship the devil. I'm gonna go hang out in this territory known for its corruption." This wasn't just another little city, "Hey, let's go over to, to Houston now, we've been witnessing over here in Austin, we're just gonna travel..." No, you know what, boys, let's go into the devil's backyard. Let's go to the one place on earth that fallen angels came to and established a doctrine of demonology and spread that doctrine to the world. Let's go to a place that's known for occultic worship. Let's go into the devil's backyard. Listen to what Jesus says, verse eighteen. "Hey Peter, thank you for telling me who I am. Yeah, I'm gonna come shatter this demonic stronghold cuz I'm the Messiah. Every demon offers a way of salvation. Every demon is behind false religion. There's a demon behind every false religion, offering life, offering hope, offering truth, offering pleasure, offering purpose, offering all these things, but they can't promise." Jesus says, "Peter, thank you for calling me who I am, now let me tell you who you are. You are Peter, and on this rock, on this mountain, on this Mount Hermon, known for demon sacrifice, demon worship, demon territorial, regional superpower, on this rock, I'll build my church. Devil doesn't scare me, demons don't scare me, I'm the King of kings, I'm the Lord of lords. All of health shudders when I speak. Let me tell you where I'll build my church." Listen, there is a false sense of success in churches today. I've literally heard of, listen, let, let me preface this because I'm not here to bash the church. There's plenty of underbelly, there's plenty of corruption, and we could point the finger all day, but the church is the bride of Christ. And, and the truth is, I love my bride. So, does my bride, Stacy, does she have some flaws? Does she have some, some blemishes? Sure, she does. And you could point them out to her all day long. But, I still love her. See, we could point at the church and say, "Well, the church is full of hypocrites, the church is this and church is..." I get it, but, but, let's not forget it's the bride of Christ. Now, back to, "I'll build my church", there's a lot of sadness sometimes, let me phrase that very carefully. There are some times when pastors want to plant their church in the regions or the territories that will be the most successful. "Well, I've done demographic studies and I've searched the, 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 um, the economic success of this region and, and all these people here, they look like me, they, they have money like me, I'm, these are my people. So, I'm gonna build my church on this side of town, in this location because I think I'll have the most success here because, you know, economically, they could afford it and, uh, uh, this is a, this is, you know, population is growing and, and so, I'm gonna look at the charts and the graphs and the demographics and figure out where to plant my church." Now, now, there's, there's plenty of times where God puts the church there, but sometimes we in our flesh want to spread the gospel to the easiest regions. God's saying, "No, no, no, let's break down the gates of hell and plant our church. Why don't you go to the least of these? Let's go to the territory of town that's most corrupt. Let's go to that region where the devil's got a stronghold. Oh, yep, prostitutes, drug dealers, uh, uh, gang bang, yeah, yeah, that's a perfect place. Let's go to that corner, let's go to Caesarea Philippi. On this rock that's been claimed by the devil, I'll build my church." See, this is what he says, he says, "Peter", and see, Peter's name meant Little Rock, and he is talking to Peter. "Peter, you're gonna build my church", Peter's kinda known for planting the first churches. Peter's kinda the father, if you will, of the church. So, was Jesus talking about Peter being a rock? Yes, he was. Was Jesus saying, "I am the rock, Christ Jesus upon the solid rock, the chief cornerstone"? Yes, he was. Was he talking about the rock of Revelation supernatural wisdom and understanding from God? Absolutely, he's talking on four different levels. Scripture isn't just surface Scripture. Scripture has level one, level two, level three, level four. Most of the time, well, all the time, Scripture's on fourteen different levels. That's why you'll read your Bible for eternity in heaven and be blown away cuz you didn't even get it eight years ago in heaven. It's gonna continuously, it's the living word of God. So, the fourth level of the rock here is Jesus declaring, "I'll build my house on top of the devil's territory." It's powerful stuff. It says this, the gates of hell, uh, uh, I'm sorry, eighteen. "And I'll also say to you, Peter, and on this rock, I'll build my church, and the gates of hell will not prevail against it." The gates of hell. Oh, well, Jesus is just using good word picture. No, that was the gate to the city, that was the gate, that was the entrance. We, we use this word a lot. He was talking about, this is literal ground for the devil. And you know what? His intimidating gates will not stop me. See, here's the thing about the church. God's empowered you to go break through the gate. He didn't say, "Oh, just be kind, little shy Chris", no, 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 "You go break down the gates of hell. There is a literal territory that God's called you to go invade. This place, this hell, is located on earth and in this Scripture, God's bringing out, there is a gate to hell." Well, pastor, he's just talking metaphorically. Okay, let's turn Revelation, here we go. Revelation chapter twenty, let's, let's blow our own little paradigm, our own little minds. Go to chapter, uh, twenty, where Satan is, uh, where, I'm sorry, I'm getting all, y'all got me all worked up now. Here we go, go to Revelation chapter, all right, I'm, I'm gonna slow down. Go to Revelation chapter nine, Revelation chapter nine. Listen to this. I know, it's in Revelation, it's, it's crazy, it's way out there, the fifth trumpet. "Then the fifth angel sounded, and I saw a star fallen from heaven to the earth." What is the star? It's an angel. Is this a holy angel, good angel? No, this angel's fallen. Now, this isn't a twinkle, twinkle, little star, and it fell, this is an angel that fell. "And then the fifth angel sounded, and I saw a star fallen from heaven to the earth." Where did the star fall from? This place called heaven, where did it fall to? This, this place, this physical place called earth. "And to him was given the key to the bottomless pit", a physical key to the bottomless pit. Where's the bottomless pit? It's on the earth. And he, uh, well, that's just word picture. Okay, well, let's keep going. "And he opened the bottomless pit, and smoke arose from the pit like the smoke of a great furnace." Well, it's just still word picture, just, God, Jesus is just giving us an imagination to understand spiritual things that we just can't understand. That's a lie, the devil wants you to think it's all super sci-fi, it's reality. Here we go. "And he opened the pit, smoke arose out of the pit like the smoke of a great furnace, and the sun and the air were darkened because of the smoke of the pit." So, the sun is darkened because pit, uh, smoke comes out of this pit. Revelation chapter nine, verse one and two. Smoke comes out, darkens the sun, and the air's hard to breathe. And then it goes on talking about a demon army of locusts coming out. Now, we're not here to talk about Revelation, but I'm telling you, there are real gates to a real bottomless pit, which is hell, and they're on this earth. If you believe that there's an angel in front of the Garden of Eden with a flaming sword preventing entrance, then how is it so hard to believe that there's a gate to hell on earth? Just think about it. Is it all, is the whole Bible just a metaphor? Well, Jonah wasn't really swallowed by a big fish, God just wants us, Jo, Noah didn't really get in a boat and save all the animals, it was just a regional flood. It, it wasn't a globe, God doesn't really mean that David picked up a slingshot and with one stone hit a two-by-two-inch square on Goliath's head. It either means what it says or it doesn't. I know, I'm all worked up. "And he says, 'Peter, on you I'll build my church, and the gates of hell will not prevail against it.'" Listen to verse nineteen, "And I'll give you the keys of the kingdom to heaven." What? God's talking gate, keys, hell, heaven. Two little verses, he's bringing out theology, he's bringing out doctrine. He's opening the eyes to Peter, saying, "Listen, there are demonic spirits on this Mount Hermon, and they do have power, Peter. There are gates to hell." Peter, it's real. Being a good little Jewish boy, you understand the pagan demonic activity of these other cultures, and you under- And you understand how scary it is when you feel fear and that darkness envelops you. But oh, Peter, you don't need to fear some stinky sulfur brimstone hellfire gate. You break down the gates. See, who's supposed to be advancing? Hell? Is hell advancing? Is Satan winning? There, there's these buzzwords in Christianity, oh, all hell is breaking loose on earth, the, the world, America is going to hell in a handbasket. Oh, man, the devil, man, he sure is on, the devil, the devil, the devil, man, he's gaining power, the devil, the devil's. Listen, quit all that. Gates are stationary. Fixed. They don't move. The church is advancing. The kingdom of heaven is advancing. And we're slaughtering the kingdom of hell by force. We're not going, oh, would you please ask Jesus in your heart? Just please ask him in your, listen, it's ju- just, just do this. You don't really have to change anything. Just go say these four little magic words, say this little prayer, please ask you, no, break down the gates of hell with authority and power. And confidence and boldness that God's given you. He is breaking out of your shy little shell. You're gonna break down the gates of hell that's been trapping you. Some of your loved ones are behind the gates of hell. God says, break down. Now, listen, there's a lot of spiritual, uh, uh, theology here, but I just wanna bring up the fact that hell is a real place. Okay, Cameron, we'll, we'll prove it some more. Okay, here we go, Matthew, chapter twelve, verse forty, Jesus speaking, okay. Pretty good authority, Matthew twelve, forty. Jesus says, for as Jonah was three days and three nights in the belly of a great fish. I love it. Jesus, talking to his boys. Talking to naysayers, talking to scribes and Pharisees. Well, listen, the story of Jonah is not real. I mean, if Jonah was like five foot four and weighed a hundred and fifty pounds, you're telling me he was thrown overboard and swallowed by a big fish? That whole story is just a nice little made up fictional story like Pinocchio. Just to teach us a really good moral lesson, then why in? The world would Jesus use that? Why would he put his stamp of validation on that to describe what he's going to do in a few matters of time? I mean, really break through the lies and say, you know what? Man, I believe, yeah, it's crazy. But I believe in a God that came and died on the cross and his blood has set me free. How crazy is that? And then I believe they buried him and he rose three days later and he's in heaven and he sent his spirit. How crazy are you already? Jesus says, for as Jonah was three days and three nights in the belly of the great fish, so will the son of man, Jesus. Be three days and three nights in the heart of the earth. In the heart of the earth. Oh, well, he didn't really, he just meant like, you know, six feet under, you know, he didn't really mean hell. He just meant in the heart of the earth, you know, okay, Luke sixteen, twenty-three. And being in torment in Hades, we've already read this story, the first two sessions. This is the rich man in Lazarus. He lifted up his eyes. The rich man's down, Lazarus is up. He lifts up his eyes, that's not, oh, it's just coincidental, Acts two, thirty-one. Peter, 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 Jesus's friend, who just said in, in Matthew sixteen, a few, a few, uh, uh, days earlier. Hey, Jesus, and now Jesus has ascended, Peter's preaching in Acts, chapter two. For seeing this, Jesus spoke concerning the resurrection of Christ. That his soul was not left in Hades. And his flesh did not see corruption. Oh, oh, man, Revelation nine, we already read it, Ephesians four, now this, he, Jesus ascended. What does it mean that he first, uh, what does that mean that he ascended? That he first also descended into the lower parts of the earth. He who descended is the one who ascended far above the heavens that he might fill all things. Hell doesn't scare Jesus? He's defeated hell. He's got the keys. Who gives the angel the key? It's in the earth. Number sixteen, now it came to pass, I read this the first session, it just is funny, it came to pass, these people are rebelling. They're, they're throwing a temper tantrum and so God punishes them, he says, now it came to passes, as he finished speaking all these things, that the ground split apart. Under them and the earth opened up its mouth and swallowed them up with their households and all the minacora with all their goods. So they all, so they and all those with them went down alive into the pit. That doesn't just mean hell, a gorge, that means the pit of hell. I mean, it doesn't just mean the earth, it means the pit of hell. Isaiah fourteen, nine, hell from beneath is moved for thee. There's so many verses about hell. Hell is in the place, is in the earth. I hope I made my point. I know I'm all worked up tonight, but God is good. Let's talk about the devil. Let's talk about. Who, who represents hell? There, there's three people or, or beings that represent hell. And we're, we're somewhat uneducated about them because we just don't go deep in our theology. We just. We just let the preacher preach to us, but we don't do it to study ourself. We just, we just kinda, oh, yeah, there's heaven, there's hell. Say the prayer, live with Jesus, yeah, that's all it is, that's all it is, yeah, that's it, yeah, he wants you to live, you know, huh. Lucifer, Lucifer is Satan and the devil. Who's Lucifer? There's fallen angels. Lucifer was an angel. Lucifer was an angel, or, or he is an angel, he's, he's now a fallen angel. Angels have two classifications. There's holy angels that did not fall. And there are angels that fell and we call them fallen angels. They're both angels. They both have angelic power. They both have the ability in the spiritual world and the spirit realm that you and I don't in the physical. When we say the angels fell, there was a rebellion in heaven and we'll read about it. There's a rebellion in heaven and Satan led that rebellion. Revelation, chapter twelve, just go read Revelation, chapter twelve. A war broke out. Lucifer is a very powerful, influential, beautiful angel. Responsible to lead heaven in worshiping God. It, it, it's pretty tragic what happened to Lucifer. Lucifer was, scripture would indicate, and we'll read a few verses, he was the most beautiful angel. He was a, he sounded beautiful. He didn't just play music, he was a musical instrument. Scripture describes him as a musical instrument. He was to lead worship, but his pride got to him to where he thought. He was greater than God. God gave him so much influence and power. That it literally went to his head. So he's removed from heaven. And he takes with them a large portion, a third of the angels of heaven. We get that from Revelation twelve, a third of the stars. Stars in scripture are lights in the sky, but they're also angels. Now, there, you gotta decipher, is this star a reference to a holy angel or an unholy angel? But angels and stars are describing angelic beings. For example, in Revelation two and three, there's an angel, there's a star, there's an angel over churches. There are stars that fall, so Lucifer is a fallen angel. Turn to Isaiah fourteen, Isaiah fourteen and Ezekiel twenty-eight. Give great insight and description to the power and demise of Lucifer. So when we talk about Lucifer, we talk about in the same realm, the devil, the dragon. Satan, the serpent, he goes by other names or descriptors to, um, understand who he is. So Lucifer, let's talk about Lucifer first before fallen angels. Lucifer fourteen, um, eh, there's so much truth here. Lucifer, uh, Isaiah fourteen, what'd I say, Lucifer fourteen? Isaiah, chapter fourteen, verse four. Listen to this, that you will take up this proverb against the king of Babylon. The king of Babylon. Babylon is the end time city, the great beast system of the devil. Babylon gets its name from Babel, Babel was the first demonic dictator, the Tower of Babel, Nimrod himself. The incarnation, he's filled with the devil, this, this, this is double language here, the king of Babylon. How the oppressor has ceased, the golden city ceased. The Lord has broken the staff of the wicked, the scepter of the rulers. He who struck the people in wrath with a continual stroke. He who ruled the nations in anger is persecuted and no one hinders. Isaiah, chapter fourteen, verse seven. The whole earth is at rest and quiet, they break forth into singing. Indeed, the cypress trees rejoice over you and the cedars of Lebanon saying. Since you were cut down, no woodsman has come up against us. Hell from beneath is excited about you to meet you at your coming. This is deep. It stirs up the dead for you, all the chief ones of the earth. It has raised up from the thrones all the kings of the nations. They all shall speak and say, have you also become as weak as we? He's talking about the inhabitants of hell, realizing when Satan is dethroned and cast into the lake of fire. And all the dead in hell, all the kings that used to rule on earth that are now in hell. They're all amazed that Satan, Lucifer himself, is now reduced to one in the same place as they. We have this idea that devil's down, sitting on his throne in hell and he's just ruling hell and he enjoys hell. And, and hell is his domain and he's got all of his minions with Satan, Lucifer hates hell. He will not be in peace in hell. He won't be going, oh, I love this. He will be in torment. In this passage, he's being reduced. Here we go, check this out. Verse ten, Isaiah fourteen, they shall all speak and say, have you also become weak as we? Have you become like us? Your pomp, pride, is brought down to shield hell. And the sound of your stringed instruments. It is so deep. Lucifer was the worship angel. His worship turned to blasphemy. And the sound of his voice, the sound of his music. The sound, your pomp has brought you down to shield and the sound of your strained instruments. The maggot is spread under you and worms cover you. It's deep, the fall of Lucifer, verse twelve. How you have fallen from heaven, oh Lucifer, son of the morning. Oh, how you've fallen, you were the, you were the sun, you were like bright like the sun. Later in the New Testament, it says, ang- that Satan is an angel of light. Listen, I'm gonna stop right here for just a second. Just because you've talked to angels do not, does not mean they've been holy. Fallen angels don't come in the form of pitch, pitchforks and red for- horns. They mimic light. There's angelology and worshiping of angels and a lot of people. Claim to talk to angels that tell them, listen, that's not how God does it. Just because it's an angel does not make it holy. Let's wake up here. Here we go. How you've fallen, oh heaven, how you've fallen from heaven, oh Lucifer. Son of the morning, how you were cut down to the ground, you who weakened the nations. How did he weaken the nations? Through demonology, through his rebellion, through his blasphemy of the one who loves us and created us. For you have said in your heart, here's the five I-wills of Satan. Verse thirteen, Isaiah fourteen, thirteen, I will ascend into heaven, I will exalt my throne above the stars of God. Stars of God, other angels, that's not twinkle, twinkle, this is other created. I'll exalt my throne above all of God's other create and above. I'll, I will also sit on the mount of the congregation on the farthest sides of the north. I will ascend above the heights of the clouds, I will be like the most high, El Eleon, the most high God. Verse fifteen, yet you shall be brought down to hell, to the lowest depths of the pit, again indicating different levels. Those who see you will gaze at you and consider you saying, is this the man who made the earth tremble? Is this the guy who shook the kingdoms? This is the devil? Who made the world as a wilderness and destroyed its city? Who did not open the house of his prisoners? All the kings of the nations, all of them sleep in glory, everyone in his house. But you, oh Lucifer, are cast down to the grave like an abominable branch, like the garment of those who are slain. Thrust through with a sword who go down to the stones of the pit like a corpse trodden underfoot. You will not be joined with them and burial because you have destroyed your land and slayed your people. Listen. Satan transforms himself as an angel of light, second Corinthians eleven, first Corinthians two. But we speak of the wisdom of God in a mystery, even the hidden wisdom which God ordained before the, the world knew his glory. Which none of the princes of this world, for had they known it, would have crucified the Lord. I'm gonna talk about Ezekiel twenty-eight and Daniel in just a minute. But let me just say this, Satan is an angel. There are other fallen angels. Satan is the leader. He's the tyrant, he is the son of perdition, he is the one that led the rebellion. But these other angels also have power and authority and dominion and territory and places that they rule. So Satan technically is the ruler of these other princes of God. These other sons of God, these other fallen angels. Now I'm choosing my words carefully cuz I want you to grasp them. Angels are sons of God. Well, I thought I was a son of God, I am a son, child of God. Listen, we're adopted sons of God. You and I are sons and daughters of Adam. Through Adam, through the first Adam, sin entered the world and corrupted us. Sin didn't enter in and corrupt the angels in heaven that haven't fallen. Adam's choice didn't affect Gabriel and Michael. Adam's choice affected you and I, human offspring. You and I are adopted, grafted into, through the blood of Jesus, we are now sons and daughter of God. We're all creations of God. But we're not all sons and daughters of God until we have the blood of Christ Jesus flowing through our brain. Through our veins, through our brains, I need them, through our veins. When we're talking about the sons of God, we're talking about fallen angels. These fallen angels were given territory. They were supposed to rule the earth with God, but they rebelled against God. It's all in the Tower of Babel, Genesis, chapter ten. We can study that in a later session. But let's understand this, that fallen angels are also considered princes in scripture. So we're talking about Lucifer, but let's talk, let's, let's broaden that a little bit to fallen angels in general. And fallen angels are different than demons, so let's not categorize them all and just angels and demons. We got fallen angels, Lucifer's one of them, he's the ringleader, he's the most powerful, he's the most influential. But let's just broaden this a little bit to fallen angels in general. Fallen angels in general, Revelation, chapter twelve. And, and Lucifer and his angels, his stars, that the tail swept a third of the stars. They're fighting against God's holy angels, Michael and his warring angels. So, listen to this. Um, I know I'm going fast, but let me back up just for a second. Remember when Jesus is on the cross? This is some cool stuff. When Jesus is on the cross, what's one of the last seven statements that he makes? He makes statements like, I commit my hand, uh, my hand, my, uh, my spirit, um, I can't even remember. Um, it is, he says, it is finished. He, he says seven statements, I can't remember what they are all of a sudden. But the one I wanna talk about is, is remember this statement, he says, my God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me? You remember that on the cross? Listen to this, when Jesus makes that. Listen to this, when Jesus makes that statement in, in Matthew twenty-seven forty-five. He says, my God, my God, why have thou, why have you forsaken me? When Jesus makes that statement. He is forsaken for God because he becomes sin. And God can't look upon sin. For the first time in his life, Jesus is without the presence of God. But he's also making that statement. Because there were Jewish rabbis and Pharisees and scholars and scribes and Jewish men and women. That knew the entire Old Testament, frontwards and backwards. They knew it, they memorized it, they understood it. So in Christ-like fashion, Jesus is on the cross. And, and now some of them are coming back to me. He, he tells John, take care of my mom. This is now your mother, this is now your son. He's taking care of his mother. He, he is talking to the thief, you'll be with me in paradise. That's the coolest story ever. I love it. And, and then he says, into your hands I commit my spirit. It is finished. But then in the night hour, he cries out Eli, Eli, LaBaxus Saban, I can't say Lama LaBaxus on, something like that. My God, my God, why have you forsaken me? So in those words, he's telling people something. He's saying Psalms twenty-two. Psalms twenty-two. All of you Jews. All of you scribes and rabbis who think you're doing God a favor by killing me. Psalms twenty-two. See, if, if there was a, 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 a chapter and verse, which there wasn't. He could have just as easily said, Psalms twenty-two. And you and I would have gone, Psalms twenty-two, what's he talking about? Let's go read Psalms twenty-two. Let's go read it. Here we go, Psalms twenty-two. What's the first verse in Psalms twenty-two? My God, my God, why have you forsaken me? What? You know, when David wrote this a thousand years before, he didn't even know what Roman crucifixion was. There was no cross when David wrote this. Jesus says, Psalms twenty-two, boys, let me educate you on the cross. Psalms twenty-two, my God, my God, why have you forsaken me? Why are you so far from helping me and from the words of my groaning? This scripture is so prophetic. I can't read the whole thing. Verse six. When David wrote this, David is writing. And in verse six, it says, but I am a worm. Remember worms in hell, talk about. I am a worm and no man, a reproach of men and despised by people and all those who see me ridicule me. This is describing the cr- crucifixion. This is describing Jesus on the cross. Many bulls have surrounded me. Strong bulls of Bashan have encircled me. They gape at me with their mouths like a raging and roaring lion. I am poured out like water and all of my bones are out of joint. What happened to Jesus when he was dropped on the cross that gets you out of joint? My heart is like wax. How did Jesus die? He literally died because his heart exploded and. It is melted within me. My strength is dried up like a pot's herd. My tongue clings to my jaws. You've brought me to the dust of death for dogs have surrounded me, talking about non-believers, Gentiles. The congregation of the wicked has enclosed me. They have pierced my hands and my feet. I can count my bones. They look and stare at me. They divide my garments among them. And they cast lots for my clothing. I could read the whole passage, but I, I wanna go back to the verse. I wanna, I wanted to prove to you that this is talking about the crucifixion. Jesus is saying, my tongue is clea- clinging to my mouth. That's when he asks for some water, because he's got something else to say. But he can't say it because there's no moisture. You can physically count his ribs. He had already been lacerated. He'd already been opened up. His, he, his heart is literally what died that killed him. But he says this, the bulls of Bashan have encircled me. Were there a bunch of bulls around the physical cross? Or are these bulls of Bashan demons of hell, fallen angels? You go to second Corinthians and it says, if the angels had known crucifying him. They would have never done it if they would have known that it would just strip them of their power. I, I know I'm, I know I'm talking a lot, but, but I wanna go back. Let's, let's keep going. We're gonna stick with this. Even if we gotta do an extra session, Ezekiel twenty-eight. Well, let me just say this one more time. Let me, let me slow down and read the first Corinthians, chapter two. Go to first Corinthians, chapter two, verse seven. But we speak with the wisdom of God in a mystery, even hidden wisdom. Which God ordained before the world unto glory. Which none of the princes of this world knew. Who crucified Jesus? It was the Romans. Was it a bunch of princesses? I mean, not princesses, but a bunch of princesses? How do you say that plural? Was it a prince of earth? Or was it fallen angels that had territory where sun, they were princes once of the kingdom? See, it's these, it's these fallen angels that crucified Gi- it's Satan himself. It's his minions, his army. That is influencing men. Put that guy to death and all your problems will be solved. If they had known that, they never would have crucified the Lord of glory. Read it for yourself. Second Corinthians ver- uh, chapter one, verse, or first Corinthians, chapter two, verse. I don't even know where it's at now. First Corinthians, chapter two, verse seven. Go to Ezekiel twenty-eight. I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep hammering this point home. And uh, I'm trying to cover too much territory, so I'm gonna keep hammering this point and we'll pick it up. Next time, Ezekiel twenty-eight. Listen to this, moreover, the word of the Lord came to me saying, son of man. Take up a lamentation for the king of Tyree and say to him, thus says the Lord God. We're gonna describe Lucifer one more time. You were the seal of perfection. Lucifer was the seal of perfection, full of wisdom and perfect in beauty. You were in Eden, the garden of God. You used to be in the presence of God. Every precious stone was your covering, the sardis, topaz, diamond, beryl, onyx, jasper, sapphire, turquoise. Emerald with gold. The workmanship of your timbrels and pipes. Timbrels and pipes, uh, um, illustrate musical instruments. We're talking about Lucifer. The workmanship of your timbrels and pipes was prepared for you on the day you were created. Satan was created. You are the anointed cherub who covers. I established you. You were on the holy mountain of God. You walked back and forth in the midst of the fiery stones. You were perfect in your ways from the day you were created. Until iniquity was found in you. By your abundance of your trading, you became filled with violence within. And you sinned, therefore I cast you out as a profane thing from the mountain of God. And I destroyed you, oh covering cherub from the midst of the fiery stones. Your heart was lifted up because of your beauty. You corrupted your wisdom for the sake of your splendor. I cast you to the ground. I laid you before kings that they may gaze at you. You defiled your sanctuaries by the multitude of your iniquities, by the iniquity of your trading. Therefore I brought fire from your midst. I devour, it devoured you. And I turned you to ashes upon the earth in sight of all those who saw you. All who knew you among the people are astonished at you. You Lucifer, Satan, the devil have become a horror and shall know, and shall be no more forever. Listen. We'll pick up on fallen angels and demons and, 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 and the Nephilim and things like that eh, next time. But I wanna bring out the point that there is a real hell. And Satan is a fallen angel. He once was perfect in wisdom and beauty. He was once in Eden, not just as the serpent. But he was in the presence of God. Eh, where Adam and Eve were was the garden of Eden. Eden is, is this place. Satan was once with God. Lucifer was once in his presence. He was beautiful. He had all these uh, different jewels describing him. He was perfect. He was created with the workmanship of God, his timbrels and pipes, like Adam. He, there was nothing lacking in him. Until iniquity was found in him. And he fell. Satan has minions with him, fallen angels. Those fallen angels are referenced to princes. They're referenced to bulls of Bashan. They're likened to different descriptions of, of, of animals like birds and fowls. We will pick up here next time and next time we'll pick up on uh, Daniel. When he's fasting and praying that, that an angel comes to him, but the prince of Persia was still withheld him. So we'll pick up on princes, uh, nations, uh, the Nephilim out of Genesis, chapter six. We'll pick up on the authorities of hell. And how they are, are defeated foes. They're not these foes that have so much power. Now they're nothing to be trifled with. They're not to be discredited. But they, they're not to be, um. Underrated, I guess. But if Jesus lives in us, then we have power over them. We like Peter have authority over the gates of hell. So I know we've covered a lot of territory. We'll pick up here next time. I'll try to bring some clarification. If you need our notes, go to whitestonechurchtx.com, go to the drop down uh, menu page place and. Give us your email. We'll send them to you. If you got questions, post them there. I'll try to respond to them. I love you. Thank you so much. Listen. If you're a believer in Jesus Christ and you have authority over the enemy. You have authority over hell. Hell is a real place. And sometimes the reason we're not excited about heaven is because we don't really know where we're going. But man, if you were gonna go on a trip to an exotic island, you would study it and learn about it. And you'd tell all your friends, yeah, man, I'm gonna go spend six weeks in Hawaii or something. If, if you really knew, if, if whether you like Trump or not, or you. Or put Obama or Bush or whoever you want in the White House, if you got an invitation to go eat dinner with the president. Man, you would be spunked. And you'd be, and if, and if he said, hey, bring all your friends with you up to, up to however many you can fit on the bus, bring. Man, you would be excited and you would get prepared and you would dress up and, and you would go anticipating a great feast. Anticipating a mansion, anticipating, you know, the, the pomp and circumstance of, of the White House and all the, the. And if you really knew what hell was like. You would go, I would not wish that on my worst enemy. You wouldn't even wanna see Hitler rot in hell. For the atrocities that he, that he committed. You wouldn't wish that. If we really knew that there was a real place and it was really a lake of fire. And that these are not just metaphors, but they are descrip- describing a real place. Then we might be a little more apt. To not get trapped by this life and to share the gospel. To share the love of Christ with somebody. We'll pick up next time. Hell being a real place. We'll go back into some description of Lucifer, fallen angels. We'll talk about demons. We'll talk about the Nephilim. We'll talk about tying that in with Mount Hermon and, and the attack on. On um, uh, the bloodline of Jesus and, and we'll kinda wrap this thing up and, and, and hopefully bring some. Some basic understanding of this theology that the Bible teaches. About this place called hell. Listen, you don't have to go to hell. You don't deserve hell. Hell is no party. It's not, not where the cool kids go. Hell is dark, it's absent. It's not just darkness with no lights. It's darkness of the absence of God. You felt fear before? The enemy brings fear. Fear is a spirit. It's a demon. Fear, being afraid of snakes isn't fear. Fear is that darkness that envelops you, that makes you wanna take your own life. That makes you want to scream and run and hide. It makes you want to cower. Listen, Jesus says hell is full of darkness. It's not just talking the lack of illumination. Talking about it's full of the presence of wickedness and evil and sin. Jesus destroyed that. He's not mad at you. He loves you. Ask him into your heart. Give your life to God once and for all. Quit messing around. Just tell all your friends, man, I'm no longer that man, that woman. I ain't doing that no more. Walk out the door, break up, do what you gotta do. Live the life that you know God wants you to live. He's not mad at you. He's not, so not mad at you. He loves you. Ask him in your heart. It's this simple. Jesus, come into my heart. Be my Lord, be my, I repent. I repent, Jesus. I know what I've done is wrong, even though the world, even though, even though I've tried to convince myself and everybody else to try. I know it's wrong. God, I don't know how to stop. I don't know how to get out. I don't know what to do. But God, I repent and I'm, I'm depending upon you to set me free. God, break down the gates of hell that have trapped me. Listen, forgive your parents, forgive your, your ex. Know that God's forgiven you. Walk, walk as a new person. Don't let somebody else keep you bound. Don't end up in a place that God has set you free from and rescued you from. Amen. We'll see you Thursday night, right here, six thirty. We won't be here tomorrow night. Thursday night, six thirty, we'll be in session four of hell. Take care. God bless. See you next time.